Citizens of Double Oak, good evening. It is now 7:00 PM. We will now come to order for the meeting this evening. I would last, I would like to ask our Town Secretary Eileen Kennedy to please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Shawan Redd. Mr. Whizen Hunt.
Here.
Ms. Parsons.
Here.
Ms. Hilliard.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. Town Council Member Scott Whizen Hunt will now lead us in an invocation.
Our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for the opportunity to come and do the town's business, give us the wisdom to do what's right for the town, put our biases aside, and make sure that we optimize what we can do and just plan the best we possibly can with the limited resources we have. Keep our public safety officers safe, our fire department safe, and our military for serving or in other countries, keeping our country safe. In your heavenly name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Scott. Town Council Member Jean Hilliard will now lead us in our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Jean.
Why are we moving that? So Brian puts it in a particular place so it can be seen on the video. It was set up for a reason that way because there was a request that they weren't being seen on video. So I don't know, Brian, if we need to move that back. Do you want to check?
Well.
Brian's on his way in.
It needs to be so the people who are watching stream can also see in. I guess it's impossible to please everybody all the time.
There are some empty chairs, so maybe you could shift to a seat where you could see better if not, maybe. Sorry, there was a request that the podium wasn't on camera all the time and that the speaking citizens weren't. So we're trying to also honor that.
The next segment of the council meeting is intended for citizen comment on any subject except those matters that appear on the agenda. Those citizens wishing to address an agenda item will be recognized at that appropriate time. We will also have our public hearing later this evening when the budget comes up. Any citizen's comments at this time will not receive any verbal council response, nor must the citizen expect any discourse with the Mayor Pro Tem or any other council member. This is a procedural rule not intended to convey a lack of interest or discourtesy, but rather to provide time for all citizens to speak and to move on to new business of the council. As a reminder, all proceedings of the town council, including citizen comments, are recorded for record-keeping purposes. And we are going to ask tonight, since we have a lot of folks to speak, not only on agenda items, non-agenda items in the public hearing, we will have to limit the comments by the citizens to three minutes. First on the agenda, non-agenda items, excuse me, is Peter Malik.
Peter's not a Double Oak citizen, so let's hold that to the public safety.
Okay.
He's going to get a report on the fire department during the public safety officer.
Oh, cool.
So, sorry, Pete, I was unclear in my instructions to you.
Cynthia Ray.
Hi, just wanted to take a minute to introduce myself. I'm Cynthia Ray. I live at 170 Whistling Duck Lane in Taylor Oaks. We've been in the town of Double Oak for about the last four years, and I've been following the meetings and different things that have been occurring, I guess, in the last six months or so. Of course, I became very interested in when the Lusk Lane soccer issue came up, it was going to go in, you know, across from Pumpkin Patch. And then, of course, most recently, the Acres, us living in Taylor Oaks is right there at the corner at Kings and I guess whichever you want to call it, Shiloh or McMakin, and so we were very concerned about that. And then I was really glad to see that the meetings were coming up online, so I started following those quite a bit, as well as the Denton County Commissioners and, of course, what's going on in Flower Mound as it surrounds our borders and towns around us. But anyway, I just want to take a minute to introduce myself. And at some point in time, when the, another, if it comes back up on the agenda anytime soon, I am very interested in the open mayor vacancy, and I just wanted to share that with you all.
Pat Wellen.
My head is on the FSLRF funds, so do you want me to wait until, since y'all are going to executive session on that, I wasn't sure whether to put mine there or later.
We've got you on the non-agenda, so.
So is that officially on the agenda, even though y'all are in closed session for that?
Yes.
Okay, so I need to wait until then, then. Can I get on the non-agenda, or on the agenda one?
Yes, please.
Yeah, are we going to have a time for her to speak before executive session if not?
Pat, why don't you go ahead and speak now before we go into the session?
Okay, that's why I wasn't sure, because it was executive session. So I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Agreed, agreed, yeah, it's confusing.
All right. Pat Wellen, 140 Forest Park Drive, and I'm going to speak fast. Ever since I heard about the misuse of the FSLRF funds, I've been perplexed about how this happened. Going through the council minutes from 2021 and 2022, there are only two mentions related to these funds. One in February 7, 2022, minutes where the former mayor mentioned he was going to Denton County CLFRF meeting, and the next one on March 21, in the agenda item called Discussion of CLFRF Funds, with only a mention in the minutes saying the mayor commented that the town should use the CLFRF funds as set forth in the Treasury final rule, but no action was taken and no votes took place. I was surprised after that, brief comment, that no council members ever put this on the agenda to discuss in more detail or to vote on the use of these funds. So it appears the previous council was asleep at the wheel, or they had already decided that there was no need to vote on $300,000 worth of funding. In our town meeting agenda packet on August 1, 2022, there was also an attachment of a previously approved council resolution called Town of Double Oak Approval Check and Signature Authorization Levels, showing that the town did in fact have spending limitations for this type of unbudgeted transaction, and it required council approval regardless of the amount since it was unbudgeted. So again, I'm perplexed at how the mayor and the town secretary, who is the keeper of these rules and regulations, thought that this expenditure was acceptable without council approval. I've worked on and been awarded government grants, and every time I was awarded a grant, there were very specific spending guidelines and rules that I had to follow. And I remember the mayor talking about the difficulty he and Eileen had in figuring out how to complete the paperwork. So I went out to look at where this was on the Treasury website and easily found the final rule. It's a 43-page document. It's written in plain English, which is amazing for a government document, and it's easy to follow those rules. So I went through it and looked at it and read it all, and one of the things that was on there that could have been used was on page 27 and 28 for police department retention. There is a rule or a statement that says that you can use it to make reasonable increases in compensations to persuade employees to remain with the employer as compared to other employment options. So in this case, the officer who left for other employment because of hiring bonus that we were told about, this money could have actually been used to try and retain them had the council known about it and looked at that as an option. Under premium pay, it barely, very clearly states in this booklet the three things that must be verified. The first is that they're eligible workers, and there's a list of who that is, and they checkmarked they were eligible workers under that specific thing.
Thirty seconds.
The second was the verification of income. Again, in here was a place where they just had to click, put in our county name, and find out what that was. Very easy to figure out who met that guideline and who did not. So again, I'm perplexed at how this became a difficult task when all they had to do was use this book, and it gave them all the instructions they needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Allison Holchansky.
Allison Holchansky, 220 Forest Park Drive, Double Oak. So I spent six months in 2021 job hunting. During that time, I looked at hundreds of job descriptions, applied to hundreds of jobs, interviewed with a lot of managers, and eventually had multiple offers to choose from. I'm going to share a few things that I learned about what people are looking for nowadays in a job market and best practices to attract and retain talent. And I hope you will take this information and use it to learn and improve your hiring process and help retain employees. Job descriptions matter a lot. It's a first impression. It's the first impression applicant gets out of the job, of the job, the manager, job duties, expectations, team culture, and if they're a good match in both skill set and personality. The job description is an opportunity to sell yourself as a great manager to work for, to sell your team as great coworkers, and that the environment you create in your department is fun to work at. It's an opportunity to get the applicant excited about joining your team. Poorly written job description will scare away potential applicants. It sends a message that the manager either doesn't care, doesn't put in any effort into their duties, care about their team, or doesn't know what they're doing. There's quite a few jobs that I didn't even bother applying to or check the salary. The description scared me off because it was a terrible first impression. The updated job description that was recently posted on July 28 is great, so thank you for spending the time to update it. It's really appreciated. It sends a really good message. In addition to the job description, though, the manager and the team matter just as much as salary. People spend over half their waking hours at work. Having a manager who leads by example, inspires and motivates, and makes efforts to develop their people are mandatory nowadays to attract and retain talent. Having a manager that puts in the effort to foster an engaging, team-oriented environment where people are heard, supported, respected, and care for one another is crucial. Poor work environment, bad team environment, will drive people to quit. I previously worked for less money with a terrible 46-mile one-way commute because my manager was outstanding. He beat, built a great team and culture. I looked forward to work. My current manager is also outstanding. She has bi-weekly one-on-one sessions with every subordinate to touch base and see how they're doing, to set goals based on their individual interests and needs, and asks what's needed to do their job efficiently and to the best of their ability. They put in time and effort into performance evaluations to help us improve, grow, and to let us know that our work is appreciated. Both of these manager, outstanding managers regularly get into the trenches and do the dirty work when the team is overwhelmed. The best example I have of this is my current job. On my third day, I was sent to Louisiana after Hurricane Irma to help in one of the labs.
Allison, we're up against the clock.
Okay, so the executives and a divisional vice president were working 24-hour shifts doing urine analysis of urine samples that sat in the sun for two weeks in cargo containers, and then would go back and put in another eight to 10 hours to do their normal job. So I'm hoping that you'll use this as an example, since your patrol officers are currently very overwhelmed, that you yourself and your associate chief will maybe patrol and help out your patrol officers, because that will pay dividends in trust and loyalty and motivation.
Allison, I apologize, I've got to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Candy Lamell.
Most of the people in this room probably know me because I've been here forever. I'm like 150 years old now, right? I've served on many of the town boards, and my husband served on all of the town boards before he eventually ran for office and served as Mayor Pro Tem at one point. In the past, in the last election, things got pretty heated, and I have always felt that anyone who wants to run for office should take our legal training first, because an awful lot of misstatements were made by some people running for election in the last cycle. There, I know there was a committee called the Concerned Citizens of Double Oak, and I was invited to come and attend those meetings several times, but I wasn't able to, and I decided to stay out of this political realm this time around. I'm sorry I didn't attend, because with my experience serving on boards and commissions and having been through all the legal training, I probably could have set straight some of the misconceptions people had. There are an awful lot of limitations to what a town council and even members on the different boards and commissions can do within the law. So my suggestion here is, when David has his next training session, I sure would like it if it would be publicized to the town that everybody who wants to can come and attend those sessions. We pay him the same amount whether 15 or 30 of us show up, because we're on boards and commissions, because on boards and commissions, you have to go through the training. So if you've been on boards and commissions, you know the limitations and you know the legal constraints to serving. If you haven't ever been, you could definitely be working for misconceptions. So if you could publicize that, because we pay David the same amount, whether he teaches, you know, 15 or 30 of us on boards and commissions, or whether 50 people in town want to show up to find out what the legal rules are. Thank you.
Great suggestion. Thank you. We have one, Jill Glover.
Jill Glover, 170 Double Oak Drive, and I'm going to complete Pat's statement because I am in agreement with it, if that is all right with you. So Pat shared about the booklet that had the guidelines for spending that money. So she says, that leads me to my next question, which is, why the three people who received these payments that were clearly not allowed under the rules governing these federal funds and have known about these payments were in violation of federal requirements and therefore would be looked at as illegal payments that must be paid back by the town, have not surrendered these funds voluntarily, or at least offered to pay the money back to the town if they have already expended some of the funds? I know what I would have done, but some people tell me that my sense of right and wrong is different from the majority of people, which I hope is not true. So I asked people who worked with me that had worked at the office during COVID to keep essential operations going for the organization if our organization received government COVID recovery funds and the chairman of the board decided to give us $25,000 each from these funds without consulting the executive council or seeking board approval. Then later it was found he did not have the authorization to make that decision, nor did we qualify for the payment under the federal guidelines because our income was too high, but the hourly workers did qualify and could keep their funds. And if we did not give the funds back to the organization, would basically have to find a way to pay it back or face penalties. Would they voluntarily give the money back? Of the 10 coworkers I queried, nine said they would give the money back. Five of these said they would not have spent the money for several months because they would have known there was something up if the executive committee had not been consulted, since they knew that was a normal process for that type of expenditure. So they would not have trusted they would be able to keep the money in the first place. Four said they would have spent it and then needed to come up with a payment plan. One told me they would pay it back, but only if asked, not voluntarily, because if the board did not ask for it, then it must not really be a problem. I had not thought of that. So as a citizen, I asked the three exempt employees who received these funds to which they were not entitled under the provisions of the federal grant to return that money to the town, so the town does not have to face penalties because of improper disbursement of federal funds. As sworn officials of this town, I hope you will find your way to making the right decision.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for public review. The minutes of the previous meeting have been distributed per the Administrative Rules, Section 1.402 Romanet L of Double Oak Town Ordinance, which is 72 hours prior to the scheduled time of the meeting. Is there, are there any corrections to the minutes, council? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of August 15?
I move that we approve the minutes for the meeting of August 15, 2022.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item four, the mayor, council members, and staff reports.
We didn't, we didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Sorry.
I know, we don't, we'll get out here before midnight.
We're all hustling.
I'm working on it.
You're doing good, you're doing good.
The last meeting was the first thing.
That's not, but that's not what we're covering.
We're behind.
Yeah.
We're behind August.
So this is for the meeting, the minutes for August 15.
Yep.
Yeah, so I apologize. Eileen, will you call the vote?
Ms. Hilliard.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Mr. Whizen Hunt.
The consideration and action on the minutes have been approved. So now we'll move on to item four, mayor and council members and staff reports. Mayor and council. Councilor mayor.
I have a couple of comments that I'd like to share. Since the last meeting, I've been doing some digging, because I've, a number of residents have communicated with me via email and in person about the budget process. And all along during this process, I've heard a number of comments about the fact that we should be like Bartonville. So along those lines, according to the posted 2022-2023 proposed budget, the town is proposing to keep the current property tax rate of 0.173646, which is higher than the no new tax rate, which is .152691. So they are exceeding the no new revenue for the town of Bartonville. And my, what I found interesting was, is the fact that no one's including the tax rate for ESD-1, which is fire and ambulance. So if you add that, which is .093330, which also exceeds a no new revenue rate, adding the two rates equals a mill rate of .0266976, which is a more fair apples-to-apples comparison in taxation between Double Oak and Bartonville. So for those who are strongly advocated, advocating that we be like Bartonville, I think we should be like the best Double Oak that we can be. So just as a point of reference before we get into the much discussed and highly emotional budget process. And then I have one more comment. A citizen emailed me, and I don't know if it went to the entire council or not, so I'll just address this. They asked whether the town council had considered contracting, contracting with neighboring police departments for 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM or 11:00 PM coverage. Has anyone done a cost analysis of contract versus hiring our own police personnel? Possible one to two positions covered via a contract. Based on a brief conversation with Police Rivas and some individuals that I know personally on the Flower Mound Police Force, we do have reciprocal agreements with backup, for backup with local police departments. So we have backup, but that's not the same thing as patrolling full 12-hour shifts, which is what we're trying to hire for here in Double Oak. I've also learned, and it's not a surprise, based on my experience in IBM, that when you're, when you're contracting with anybody, you're paying, you're paying for the full amount of the cost of the employee plus benefits, plus all the, all the overhead expenses of managing payroll and all the rest of that stuff. The other issue that comes into mind is, like so many things, police departments not only run on people and vehicles, they also run on technology, a lot of it. And our police depart, every, every police department runs on their own silo of technology. So you can't bring somebody in from a neighboring police department and use their services because any input they would need for citations or anything else would go into theirs, not ours, which is where they would belong. Also, I have been given to understand that it would be confusing for Denton County when they're doing dispatch to know exactly who they're dispatching to. Is it somebody on duty from Double Oak or from a neighboring community? So just thought I would bring that up in case that person is viewing the session this evening.
Thank you, Jean. Other council comments? I would like to recognize the citizens that signed up on this Keep Double Oak Safe. Thank you. We have it, it's here, we've got it for the record. Appreciate that very much.
If we, so I didn't know if we were mentioning that now or with. If we, so I didn't know if we were mentioning that now or with the discussion later on that topic.
We can do both.
Okay. Because yeah, I would say if we're going to mention it, let's at least read it so people know what we're talking about.
I just wanted to recognize it here because I figured it would come in later.
Sounds good.
All right. Moving on to item four, Public Works, Code Enforcement, Animal Control. Nobody here?
Nothing. No.
All right. Administration? Public Safety. Is this, is this? This is it? All right. Let me recognize him. Peter Malick.
I thought it'd be a nice change to hear from a firefighter and
I think that's great.
interact with the town a little bit, so.
I'll be short and I'll be brief. That's what they taught me in the military after 33 years. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members and citizens of Double Oak. My name is Pete Malick. I am a member, obviously, of the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department. I'm here to provide the town an overview of the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department. As a 30-plus member department, we are considered and accounted as a top-tier department in training and fire EMS response. Let me give you a quick overview of the numbers. From January to August of this year, our department has answered 150 emergency calls, accumulated over 2,014 hours of training, and provided at no cost to the citizens over 4,210 hours of station duty time to continue our excellent response for those in need. That's basically us being at the station and being able to respond in a timely manner, being right there at the station. Our department as a team is trained at various fire colleges throughout the Dallas-Fort Worth area, specifically Denton County Community, where we train in commercial and apartment fires, vehicle fires, extrication, modern vehicle extrication, and swift water training. Our members hold certifications in firefighter 1 and 2, wildland firefighter, EMT, and even paramedic certifications. With all the previous hours I just informed you of, we even had members of our department deployed to various areas of Texas during the severe drought that we had for weeks at a time to assist in wildline fire, wildland firefighting. And if any of you know about wildland firefighting, it is totally different from fighting a building fire because you're continually out there in the heat and the sweat with no relief. So my hat's off to those firemen. They answered the call in addition to providing all this dedicated time to the department. With our department, there's no I in teamwork. Our department continually fosters other team relationships with Flower Mound and Denton County ESD-1. We do this through training and ride-alongs. We have several members who put personal time and outside of Double Oak to work with Denton County ESD to improve their skills in emergency care and the latest firefighting techniques. One of the things we believe in is that you're never too old to learn. Now, all this news is great. We continue to put forth the effort to serve the citizens, so we make sure on our social media platforms that we are 100% committed and we allow the citizens to see the training and everything that we accomplish. One of the department's highlights, and it may be a repeat for some of you here, was last year's recent ISO certification, and that's the insurance services office. Basically, that's a rating on what you would pay for your insurance as a homeowner based upon how the fire department is rated in their training and what tier they're in. It used to be, fire used to be in the top three, but due to hurricanes, tornadoes, hailstorms that affects our insurance, fire has moved down. It's still a consideration because that's why they still have the ISO Corporation. They're located out of New Jersey. The inspectors come out here and they do a very arduous and tedious training and survey of our records. Every five years, the departments, paid and volunteer, go through this drill. The lower ratings is good, higher ratings are bad. There are roughly 50,000 fire departments nationwide, volunteer and paid. Currently out of this number, 74 of the 50,000 are rated ISO-1 class rating, which is the highest ranking you can achieve. Now, Double Oak received an ISO-2, but let me explain, we were one point away from an ISO-1, the way we could have accomplished that if we would have picked up the fire station and put it right in the center of Double Oak. That was one of the stipulations, along with we have no high rises, so there's no requirement for the department through our charter to have any type of aerial ladder. But still, we were one point and we tried to find it. But let me explain something to you, that out of the 50,000 departments, only 749 departments are rated an ISO-2. And based upon Double Oak's score, it placed us with that one point in the top 1.6% out of 50,000. So we have a lot to be proud of because I could tell you as the ISO audit officer, that was a lot of paperwork to go through and inspection, and the inspection process is seriously, it's, it's very, very tedious. So what does all this mean? Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department is considered a top performer in the nation and will continue to strive to provide excellent service to our citizens. Thank you very much.
Peter, thank you. Peter, if we could have all of the fire departments stand up in the back, please, and be recognized? If you could all stand up, please? Thank you. Great, great information. That is awesome.
I did want to clarify the one point, the 1.6%, that is paid and volunteer departments, not just volunteer only, so it doesn't matter.
That is great.
Good job.
Appreciate your service, all of you. Thank you. Public Safety?
Yes, sir. Another thing that we have thrown up, national, I have, it's coming out. If you have some injuries, it's what we have, we pull through that. That's part of the, through that in the public health. I'm unable to get on with indeed for proof purposes.
I had one applicant so far in the last two weeks, so nothing great yet, but hopefully it'll pan out for us. Been busy trying to catch up, so hopefully at the next month's council meeting, we'll have a better report of what's going on in the police department, given to you.
We look forward to it. Thank you, chief. Roads and Drainage Committee. Come on up.
Gary Garrett, 120 Trailing Oaks Drive. On September 25th, we'll be going again, crack ceiling, and it'll be a process of one to two streets a day. The scheduling is still being formatted, so I can't share that with you at the moment. We've got two contracts for roadwork that Randall has got out in play. Haven't had the feedback on that yet, but want to alert the citizens that there will be some, some pylons, maybe some diversion as far as street activity, and it's going to be on a rotating basis. The truck moves pretty quick. There's usually three to four men on it, and they cover a street pretty quickly. But there will be some slowdown in some residential areas, parts of Double Oak, because this is going on. And thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Item number five is New Business Agenda. The town council will convene into an executive session pursuant to section 551 dot 071 Texas Government Code, Legal Consultation to Seek Advice and Consultation from Town Attorney on the Use and Distribution of the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, SLFRF Funds, under the American Rescue Plan Act. I now declare that the Double Oak Town Council is convened into a closed session. Time is 7:34.
The town council will now reconvene the meeting. It is 7:54. We will now have a report out of information that was discussed in the executive session by our attorney, David Berman.
Yeah, I think it's working. All right, so we did discuss it in executive session. We as a town really have three practical options in connection with what is an improper or incorrect distribution or use of SLF RF funding, ARPA funds. I know that a lot of people are out there believing that it was illegal and borderline, if not completely criminal. I've said this before and I'll say it again. The application of the funding was a mistake. I mean, the mechanics is a different question. The lack of full council voting on the issue is a different question that I'm not addressing. That's a political one that you guys figure out as citizens of the town. But in connection with the legality, you know, the treasury regulations are lengthy and complicated, but yes, they are written in plain English. So that anybody, you know, with a reasonable, even a small amount of intelligence can read it and figure it out, but it is a bit of a chore to go through. The distribution probably was not correct. To say that it's illegal does not imply criminal conduct on anyone's part. It is very clear at this point that nobody actually absconded with funds for personal benefit or personal gain, at least none of the decision makers. And so, given the audit that we perceived, our auditor has made it fairly clear that of the employees who received premium pay, three of them who are classified as exempt FLSA exempt employees probably should not have gotten the premium pay. And so, that would also include any TMRS contributions, retirement account contributions. For all of the other employees who did receive premium pay, that was a correct and proper premium payment or use of ARPA funds, as was the use of funds for their TMRS accounts, their contributions. So, given the fact that we have three employees who were probably not entitled to receive those funds, what do we do about it? We've got three choices. The first choice, the most obvious one, is ask them to give the money back. Not a good choice. And for a number of different reasons. The first and foremost reason, you know, they received these funds five months ago, six months ago. If they don't have it anymore, then it's a burden on them to have to give it back. If one or less than all of them return the funds, then it's completely, it's really unfair to the one or more persons who can't or don't give back the monies. We can't forcibly take it from them by deducting it from future pay because that would be effectively garnishment of wages which constitutional prohibitions would apply. We have other two, we have two other very clear and much better options. In a worst case scenario, the correction is simply a budget adjustment. We simply move funds from our general fund in the amount of the payments. We move an equivalent amount from general funds into our segregated SLF RF fund. And Treasury Department regulations are satisfied and we're good. The other option is, and it wasn't made clear in our auditor's correspondence, but it is clear under treasury regulations. We can simply request with the Treasury Department that they provide us with the written, that we provide them with written justification. If we give them written justification for the use of these funds and why this was premium pay for essential workers and it furthered our efforts in the COVID pandemic. You know, there was a likelihood, and I don't know if it's good or bad, but a likelihood that the Treasury Department would accept that as a legitimate, lawful, and proper use of SLF RF funds. Our auditor needs to supplement his report because he did not mention, he did speak about it during the meeting. I wasn't here, but he made it really clear to me that he did talk to council and to the public about it, that the written justification process is one option. And it is recited and it is talked about in the treasury regulations, but I gotta say, the treasury regulations are notoriously silent on the process because I don't think there is one. As best I can tell, the Treasury Department has this exception carved out, but doesn't have any type of a review process, no guidelines, no nothing. So, we don't know if we submitted a written justification, they would accept it, or if they would fly off the handle and send special agents out here to start auditing our books and records. But, you know, if we don't ask, the answer is definitely going to be no. So, at this point, the council hasn't made a decision and certainly can't vote in executive session, but of those three choices, the council needs to pick one of those three. My suggestion is, the first one is such a painful process and difficult and not a good one. And so, among those other two choices, those are what the council will be needing to consider in an open session before the public. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Attorney. So, again, this has been a step process throughout. So, in lieu of some information that we received as it relates to the retirement funds associated with the premium pay. It has been determined in talking with Carl Deaton that he needs to make, or he will be making, an amendment to his addendum, excuse me, an addendum to his report. Because there was incorrect information as it related to the retirement monies that were associated with the six that were legal with it. So, we've got to get the report corrected. So, I'm going to send an email to him tomorrow and ask him to supplement and make an adjustment to his letter so we can get that report done. And then, we're going to come back to the next step. And the next step will be to bring it in front of a council in terms of an agenda item and discuss, consider and discuss what we need to do with our options. Did I get that right, counsel?
Yes, two items that he's adjusting.
Two items.
Two items.
That is correct.
The item about the retirement.
Correct.
Funding of the pension and then the.
Written justification.
Written justification, yes.
Correct. So, we will have that as our next to-do and I will get that sent off via email first thing in the morning and see if we can expedite it. I don't know. I will ask the question to make sure to see if we can get this done without additional cost, but there could be additional cost. So, I will also ask him that as well. Because we do have the.
I would push for no additional cost. We requested a full report. Okay, yeah.
But I just got to leave it open. Any other discussion on this?
Are we on number nine now or are we on eight? We're still on eight?
We're still on, no, I think we need to do, we're on nine, right?
We're on number nine. The council may take an appropriate action on matters discussed during the executive session.
Yes, and I move that we postpone a decision on those three options until we have the updated information from our auditor.
Counsel, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Eileen, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Parsons?
Aye.
Ms. Hilliard?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wizzenhut?
Aye.
So, we will add this as a future agenda item once we get the corrected report. We really can't at this time. Just please allow us to get to the next steps. It may not be running, going fast enough for you folks, but we'd rather be thorough than hurry. So, we will get through this. Item number 10, presentation of SafeBilt by Lee Swain for plan review of services to support Public Works Department. Mr. Swain, please come on up. If you could identify yourself and.
Lee Swain. I'm the business development manager for a company called SafeBilt. We're a building, plan, review, and inspection company based out of Fort Worth, 832 Sandy Lane, Fort Worth, Texas.
You're a little hard to hear.
I'm usually too loud. At least that's what my wife says.
Phil Donahue. So, I appreciate y'all asking me here to talk about SafeBilt and our services. We have many client cities in the general vicinity of Double Oaks here. We're in Boyd, Northlake, Argyle. We have 97 total client cities throughout the state of Texas. I started with SafeBilt four years ago. I was the very first SafeBilt employee. It was a very scary time for me. It was like the song, "One is the loneliest number you'll ever do." But, less than, a little less than four years, we have 79 full-time employees in the state of Texas. I enjoy SafeBilt because I was able to start the business unit here in Texas and I was able to hire a lot of people that I was very familiar with. I knew they practiced great customer service. I think that's, you know, we're doing something crazy. I think that's, you know, we're doing something crazy at SafeBilt. We're bringing customer service back. We try to, we try to communicate with clarity and be good communicators overall. But customer service is very important, not only with the city staff, but with the applicants out in the field. I always try to say that a building inspector is like a consumer advocate. You may have a, you may have a homeowner that's having a pool built or patio cover or getting something done for the first time, they spent some money on it. We, we try to come in there and you may have to explain a lot of things to them because they're not familiar with the process, but we take that extra time to explain that, give the citizens a, a certain comfort level. So, I, I really enjoy that aspect of it. I've been a building inspector for 25 years. Most of our, probably all of our inspectors and plans examiners have worked for cities, so we understand the municipal process and I think that, that goes a long way as well. We're all ICC, International Code Council certified. I myself hold 17 different certifications and four licenses. We're all licensed, state licensed plumbing inspectors. It's a Class C misdemeanor to inspect plumbing without a state-issued plumbing inspector's license and go through that training and process. I just, you know, really, I should have ate something before I came here. I'm feeling a little hypoglycemic, but.
Are you okay?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, that was an attempt to be, I am a little hungry, but I think I'm, I think, I think I'm going to make it. I was, I was at one council meeting till, I didn't get to the podium till midnight one time. It was my wife's birthday. I told my wife, I said, "Hey baby, I'll be right back." And I didn't get home until about 1:00 in the morning. By the time I got to the podium, I said, "Look, I don't even remember why I'm here." But, but anyhow, we, we just try to communicate with our clients and the applicants. We try to put our, put, walk, walk in that applicant or that trade's footsteps. I tell, I tell all our inspectors, "Come from a place of help first. You're there to be helpful, be knowledgeable, be ready to explain the code, get the code book out, show them that section of the code. Why are the codes important? Well, something's bad, bad has happened, that's why the code's in there." A lot of them might not make any sense to, to people that are not in this, this line of work, but take the time to explain it to them, the importance of it. And I guess it's, I ramble, I'll be up here all night. I'm, I'm a, I'm a big talker. So, does anybody have any questions? I mean, we can do, well, let me, let me, let me touch on something the chief said. We'll actually help with your ISO rating as well. Our certifications, when you're audited, and you'll get a, a, a better score and it'll help the citizens as well with their, and the business owners with their insurance rates. With our, you know, we're highly, highly certified. And the best thing about SafeBilt is we're only paid for the work that we're assigned. I looked at some of y'all's permits and it's, it's a lot of roofs, it's a lot of water heaters. I think there's like 48 permits have been issued, something like that for the 20, 2022. So, we're only paid for the work that we're assigned. So, we don't, we're not, it's not a monthly retainer, it's just off the fee schedule. I think Connie, I got Connie some information and I think y'all have that. So, I'll just open it up for questions, if anybody has any questions.
Yes, but go ahead.
I was going to say, well, that answered some of them because I just kind of wanted to understand how, yes, we were provided a fee schedule, but just not a real overview of how the process works, meaning when are you called out? How long do residents have to wait from the time they submit, you know, their plans for getting inspection? Because that is very important for us, like a, the turnaround time is important to our residents for sure.
I kind of had a feeling you were going to ask some difficult questions. No, that's an easy one to answer. It's next business day inspections. We have a team of permit texts. We have two ways, the applicant or the homeowner can call their inspection in, the old school way with the telephone, or they can, we have a web address where they send the inspection in as long as it's scheduled. Or it'd be too late, it's past 4:00 PM today, but if, like tomorrow, if they want an inspection for the next business day, they just have to schedule the inspection by 4:00 PM for next business day inspection.
So, is travel in this? You don't charge, it's built into the fee schedule?
Sure.
Travel?
It's, it's all factored in.
It's all factored in, okay.
It's a, it's a turnkey fee.
You, I saw, I saw your trade permit inspections, but that was for commercial. I didn't see any for residential.
It should, it should have been something in there for residential.
I didn't see, I, I saw residential for like the plan overview and inspection by a square footage and, and I'm sure people don't want to pay $1,200 for like an electrical inspection.
I'll just have, I have to look at that when I sent you. I don't have it right here in front of me either way.
It says trade permit inspection for a commercial remodel.
Thank you, sir.
In addition, it doesn't say residential to, to family, one or two family homes. So, I was just curious what the, what the fee rate would be for citizens because that's 99% of what you're going to be getting.
Can I come up there and you show me what? I don't have my eyeglasses, I don't have my hearing aids.
That's, that's, you've got commercial here, single-family residential, and then you've got that little broken out.
You're saying $1,200?
Oh, I was guessing. I was guessing like 8, 810 for 1,500 square, or 1,500 square feet. And if some people around 3,000, it's going to be somewhere around $1,200, right?
Well, this one here is commercial multiple families. So, this is, this is, this is an apartment complex that should be scheduled here?
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have any.
Yeah, I like that.
No, that's why, that's why I skipped that section. I was looking in the section.
Okay, if it was a, if it was a 8.
Put your mic.
If it, if it was a 1,500 square foot home, it would be $810. That would be the turnkey fee for both the plan review and inspections.
I'm talking about like in a, like say, a remodel, same thing?
Yeah, we have a lot of remodel going on.
Well, that would go to the trade permits.
Yeah, but that's for commercial. You didn't have a residential.
Is that the bottom one?
Yeah, this is.
Not much there.
This water heater, yeah, not remodel.
It'd be $70. It'd be $70.
Per inspection?
Yep.
Okay.
So, so if you had, if you had a, if you had a, if it's a, a trade, a trade permit, it would be $70 and that's not $70 per trade. Like if you had a patio cover?
Yeah.
It'd be $70 for us to come out and look at the patio cover.
Right.
But, meaning, so you do your structural inspection, you do your engineer, I mean, your electrical, you do all those and all of them combined?
Yep.
You just pay one $70 fee?
Yes, ma'am.
And by, what, is it by a trip though? I mean, like, if I'm doing a patio cover and I got the concrete first and then I'm going to run the gas, water and electric, because that's two trips for you. Are you going to charge 70 or is it one?
And it should be more than that because you're going to have a electrical before it's rough, or before it's closed up and after.
Well, typically what we try to have the contractors do is like we're, we're, we're combination inspectors.
Yes.
So, there may be two trips, there may be one for the foundation peers. And then we would try to get the contractor to have the electrical rough done, the framing done, all that so we could look at it in one shot.
Okay.
So, it, it, it's, it's, I feel like our fees are very competitive.
No, they are, they are.
I worked for another third party for 15 years, eight months, 12 days and six hours. So, I know what they're charging.
No, and we're just trying to understand.
Right.
Just, on that one, my thought is, so I had a patio cover put in a couple of years ago. How would, like, they weren't allowed to do the framing until the structural one, that inspection was done.
Well, if, if it's something that requires, if there's any steel in it, if there's anything in, in, in that like that, that contractor is going to have to get an engineer's letter. Because we're generalists, we're not engineers. So, if there's anything structural, say they build a big monster home and they have, they have steel in it and, I mean, they're, we're going to require them to get a chapter 17 special inspection for that steel. Anything crazy like that, I mean, we're, we're strictly just building, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. I'm not saying like, like discounting that, that's a lot. But if we see something.
No, no, it's, it's, it's good, $70 is fair.
Yeah, no, we just want to make sure we understand what we're, what we're talking about.
Well, it took me a long time to understand it. I took consumer math in high school to graduate, you know, balancing a checkbook, so. It's a, it, it does, it's a lot of stuff on there. And what we've done is we've, over the last four years, we've tried to put everything in that agreement that could possibly be permitted. That way, there's a fee there and you know, you know, we don't have to go back to, you know, council or anything and have an amendment to the agreement, but we can, we can provide that service.
So, here's another, for instance, and, and I'll use a personal one. My husband and I are talking about getting a generator installed.
Getting what now?
A generator, a backup generator.
Okay.
Because we can't do solar.
That's a good idea.
So, that would require a plumbing and electrical. So, would that be one charge, one trip, or two charges, two trips?
Typically with a generator, they'll have the, the gas line, they'll have the ditch open, they'll have the test on the gas line, we can inspect the gas line in the trench and we can do it all in one shot.
Okay, so if there's an existing gas line that's been approved prior?
Yeah, they'll tie into that.
Yep.
With the proper sized gas line to feed the generac, I keep saying generac, the generator.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not advertising generac.
No, I got it.
But they'll have it all, they'll have the test on it, they'll have the, the stop and it's all plumbed into the, the unit and we can, we can do that in one shot.
So, you could do that and the electrical in one shot?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate clarification.
Currently, our public works person, Randall, who is getting his certifications done, he works today with the, the, the people who provide these services for us and he actually gets to log his time against it. So, he's actually earning credit hours as he works with, in this case, it's, it's a gentleman by the name of Stephen Kohler. Do you offer a similar program like that so that he is able to get some of his continuing education?
Yeah, we, we might, we might be able to entertain something like that. Probably, probably what we could do is, a lot of times they don't want them, they don't want, we don't want somebody riding with us just for liability reasons. But if we've got some inspections and, and the person wants to come out, they could meet us there. I mean, we do that a lot.
Okay.
I had a, I had a bad job. I had to drive two and a half hours one way every day to my first inspection and I actually trained the guy that replaced me. And I was, he was city staff and I was, yeah, come on, I want, I want to quit coming over here two and a half hours. But we could definitely do that.
Yeah, I, I think it's very important. This was something that I learned from having a discussion with him last week and I think it's very important that we can add to his hours as much as possible so we can get him to the certification levels that he has.
Sure.
As required. Counsel, other questions?
So, really on this chart, just the one, it's the one, almost the one fee that would, I mean, we have some commercial, but it's pretty much just that one $70 fee. And then we would need to, if we went this direction, we would have to work to align our ordinances because they wouldn't align with this.
Sure, one, one of the other things, you know, we send the same inspector to Double Oak every day. We have a primary and then we have a backup. Because the biggest thing, biggest complaint you're going to get inspections is a lack of consistency. And so, we, we try to send the same person, we want him to get to know city staff. He'll have business cards on the front counter that will be available. We can help you guys with code updates, you know, permit applications. Well, we've got two, we've got one for commercial, one for residential. We'll put your, put your logo on it, your seal on it. We do all that inclusive of, of the agreement.
And so, I think we would also have to consider, because we just put software in place for our public works, so we would have to, I mean, that would just be a loss. It wouldn't be used anymore, right? I mean, I guess we'd have to talk to Randall and Lynn about if that would be utilized for anything.
I think Randall still needs to record all that so that we have it in our files in terms of permits and inspections on an ongoing basis. So, even if we, my perception, my guess is, even if we use these guys, he would still have to do all that recording.
Well, I guess.
Which he's doing for Steve right now.
Right, I guess, but I guess that's a question for SafeBilt. If a, it, do you have a particular software that towns need to use to work with you guys and have it on our records or how does that work?
Well, what we could do, we have a, a program we use that's called Community Core and it's, it's not like Intergov, MyGov, all the other gavs. It's perfect for the smaller city. A lot of bigger cities, they want their permit tracking system to talk to public works, they want to talk to police, they want to talk to fire. This one is just a building department program. What it does is it records the inspections, the results, the notes. It's good for producing reports if you have to say, okay, how many permits do we have, you know, for this year? How many pass, fail, whatever? And we offer that, we offer that to our clients at no additional charge. There is a small training startup fee. Northlake uses it, they love it. Argyle's looking at, at taking it on for their permit software. So, we do have that, you know, we, we like to do everything electronically and that's just the opposite of what I wanted to do a few years ago. I thought, man, if we don't have paper tickets, if we don't have this, we don't have that. But, you know, it's, it's progress. So, we, we try to do everything that way and there's not a paper ticket. We don't come in and, and drop off a ticket, inspection report and say, here, somebody's got to file this or. So, it just makes more work for city staff if we do it that way. So, we try to do it in our system. What we do, we, we build a town of Double Oak, we build you as a client in the Community Core and then all that, all that goes through Community Core. It actually sends a, it actually sends an email to the trade or the general contractor, pass, fail. They get it instant. So, there's no waiting around for somebody to find a ticket or like Easter egg hunt looking for an inspection ticket or anything like that. They get it emailed right to them.
Okay, so, just to be, Debbie Downer, what would happen if at some point in time we terminated our contract? How would we have access to all that data that's sitting in your, in your files, in your records?
Well, I, I would have to check. That's a very good, y'all are asking some hard questions over there. I don't really appreciate it, no, I'm just kidding.
Well, I, I'm, I'm big on the backend, you know, because sometimes you get hit without thinking about it. It's like, oh, hmm. Because I know databases don't talk necessarily.
I can, I can, I can, I don't want to just tell you what you want to hear.
I prefer that you take your time since.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me check into that. I mean, I, I'm sure that there, there's some language in the agreement. I never call it a contract because contract, agreement sounds like a partnership and that's what we're trying to form here, is a long tenured partnership. So, there's something in there about information. I'd have to go back and, and read our contract and then get with our attorney, Gary Amada, but I'll get that answer for you.
I'd appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. No more questions from you two over there.
General, one, do you have, do you have a contract that you institute with the towns?
An agreement.
An agree. Handshake.
Yeah, yeah, I can get one. I got one in my back pocket. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I, I, I just have to go through a process to get it drafted and I could send it out, out to you guys to review.
That would be helpful.
If you could do that, that would be great.
Yeah, because we, we want to review that before.
Okay, yeah, I, I'd get started on that right away.
I mean, I say it's, 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 a, a pay by fee is a, is a much better deal, so.
Right.
We're definitely.
Well, like I said.
Keep the interest for sure. So, we just want to make sure, you know, all the Ts and Cs are there.
Well, we, we try to be fair to our clients and we don't want to come in and burn up a, a city's budget. We want to be in it for the long haul, I mean, a lasting relationship and somebody you can count on to provide a, a, a great service at a fair price.
Additional question, what do you do, I mean, this conversation is great, but we don't know all the details of, I often forget all the different inspections we need. I know there's the grease trap inspection and there's all those. And so, that's really Randall and Lynn with her experience of years of doing this here. Is there kind of an analysis that happens before we make our commitment to say, okay, making sure everything's covered? I know you said you have this long list of licenses, but, which is excellent. Just want to make sure it'll cover what we need, right?
Yeah, I mean, most of that stuff would fall under the trade permit fee or if it was a new business and they're installing a grease trap, any commercial business, it would be based off valuation. It would be based off valuation and it would be a turnkey fee. It would be a fee for the plan review and then there would be a fee for the inspections. But that covers all the inspections if we go out there 50 times or 25 times. I mean, if it was just a, if it was like a, a shell building or a tenant finished out a remodel or something, they're, they're turning it into a donut shop and they got to put a grease trap in, that would just be, that, that project would be based off the valuation because there would be some plan review and some inspection. But it would, it would all be covered.
Okay, so, thank you. That's one thing we'll have to consider as well because Brahms is prepaid on their permits. So, that would be a problem possibly. We'd have to look at that on how that, that cost would compare and would we be eating the cost for additional permits with Brahms? We don't know what that, you know what I mean?
Well, let's, let's consider if we're eating the cost on Brahms versus the savings going this direction too, so.
Absolutely true, but something to consider and keep. Absolutely true. But something to consider and keep in mind because Lynn has mentioned that they prepaid or Randall did. I don't remember. Somebody mentioned that.
Yeah. How do you invoice? I mean, do you monthly or per?
It's net thirty.
Net thirty?
Yeah.
Per, per inspection?
Well, it's for the month.
For a month, okay.
And typically, typically our clients get that bill on the tenth of the next month.
See, now you're talking about a contract, net thirty here.
All they want the partnership.
We can joke too. We can joke too.
My wife, she doesn't think I'm funny. She asked me, she says, you want to be right or you want to be happy? And I always say, why can't I be both? And she said, don't work that way.
Well, no, it's just that that we want to make sure we think of the important things and because this is not something we do every day.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
It's, I like to joke around, but it is, it is serious. What we do is serious. You know, and we take it very seriously. We take ownership of the the task that we're assigned. And 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 then I I kind of become like the client liaison. I'm the one that comes in and asks, how are we doing? How can we improve? And sometimes it's tough to get that answer. Well, you need to do better here, there and over here or whatever. But, you know, we want to find out if we're not doing as well as we should. That way we can make adjustments and and give you guys the service that you deserve.
Other questions, counsel? We do have a citizen that did want to speak on this.
Yes, and.
Yeah, and I want to make sure that we get.
Yeah. No, I think we should do that.
You sure?
Oh, but we have another one.
Jerome Hannah, two fifty Ridgeborough Lane. A question I'm sitting here asking myself. Is Mr. Swan and Safe Built here expected to do the work that we need for a three to six month period or forever and ever, meaning greater than twelve months? If it's only three to six months until we get Randall on board or cut ties with Steve, this seems like an awful amount of work and really unfair to him and his company to come in and set up this whole process of billing and agreements and contracts. And in two months say, thank you, we don't need you anymore.
Thank you, Jerome.
Thank you.
Well, that, that's a, that's a very valid point, but what I would tell you, if that, if that's what happened, I would tell you, I'd say, hey, keep the contract active. Because I see so many people come and go from cities. It's like a revolving door. And, you know, yeah, we want to, we want to be working with you guys for for a long, long term. That's the goal. But unfortunately, it doesn't always happen that way. But I've seen a lot of cities come back to Safe Built because they want that consistency. A lot of job jumpers out there, somebody, and if somebody can better their position, I'm all for that. Hey, you know, but I've I've seen a lot of revolving doors in cities. And we're not, you know, I'm not going to walk away angry if somebody comes in and can do the job we can do in-house. But a lot of times with a smaller city, I think y'all touched on it earlier, you start counting all that fringe in and that overhead. You don't have any of that with us. So it's it's more affordable a lot of times in the long run for a smaller city to outsource their inspections.
Thank you.
We'd still be friends.
Thank you.
Mr. Swan, thank you.
This was very helpful. Thank you.
I'm gonna give y'all a card. If y'all have any questions, feel free to call me or email me, okay? Thank y'all.
We have another question.
Oh, yes.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, Mike McCurdy started Colorado Inspection Company in nineteen ninety-two in Loveland, Colorado. And he wanted to take it national. So he didn't think Colorado Inspection Company would be a very good fit for Texas. So he said Safe Built. And I like it because what do we do? We make sure things are built safe. It makes sense. But yes, ma'am. Twenty-seven now, over fifteen hundred employees. Hey, I'm a Texan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
You gave me one. Item number eleven was to be discussion, consideration and action of the Safe Built vendor in comparison to the contract with Steve Kohler. In lieu of the fact that Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Shonrod has COVID this evening and is not able to attend, we're going to table this item for for that reason, for the presentation and the comparison. But also, so that pending the review of the.
Agreement.
That Safe Built will send. Does that work for the council?
Yeah, we we could do a move to postpone. I'm kind of getting into this thing.
Or, but we can just move on, right?
Yeah.
We can just move on.
Either way. But if you like moving to postpone, I'm not gonna take that away from you.
It puts it back on the agenda. So I move that we postpone this until a future meeting when we have gathered all the additional information and our deputy mayor pro tem is returned in good health.
Do we have a second?
Second.
He seconded.
Okay.
Yeah, Scott did.
Town Secretary Eileen, could you call a vote?
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Whisenhun.
Aye.
Ms. Hoyer.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
I believe we have approved that. Okay, we are moving on to item number twelve. And that is a.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Billy, will you be joining us up front? Or do you wait till the end? Okay. All right. So it is now eight thirty-two. The public hearing is now open. And again, we will limit comments to three minutes.
Do you have a list of names? Did the people sign up?
Are none for thirteen.
Oh.
I'm sorry. Nope, nope, nope. Well, Billy Garrett. So that's why I was one. That's why I was like, she said she wasn't coming up again.
Does that mean I get everybody's three minutes or just mine?
You can have as many of those, ninety-second, third.
First of all, I want to clarify something.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry. Billy Garrett, one oh three West Caruth Lane, Double Oak, Texas. I want to clarify a rumor that I heard this weekend because if it's not a rumor, I'm quitting my day job. I am a volunteer as a treasurer for this town. I do not make sixty to eighty thousand dollars working for this town. I have not seen it in the budget. I will be glad to put it in the budget, but it is not there. So to clarify that for everyone on the record, I am not a paid town treasurer. So I do this out of the kindness of my heart. The thing that I hate most about the last two meetings, last year at this time and this year about this time, is that we are all fighting. There is a small group of people who, what I'm hearing from them, can't afford forty-six additional dollars in their income. What I have heard and what I have lived in this town for eleven years is when this town has a need, everyone steps up. The women's club once, you know, we had a garage sale last spring because we needed funds to replace money that we had lost due to COVID. And we raised some money. The town stepped up and we had a need. We do an auction every year to help our fire department. We do a casino night typically in the spring to help a student with a scholarship. We do other fundraisers. Other people have fundraisers. The fire department puts on a great party for us on the Fourth of July. But what I keep hearing is that now that our police department, who is in need, a drastic need, we can't afford that. We can't do that. So I should go to the board of the women's club and make sure to tell them, don't forget, the town cannot afford to do needy things for our town because that's what we're saying. I averaged it out. You guys will see it when I present the budget. It's forty-six dollars a year average per home in this town. Forty-six dollars and we're arguing over that. We have people who don't understand. They say we're raising the tax rate. It is totally not true. We are not raising the tax rate. The tax rate will go down. I will sentiment what Jean said. Bartonville is not adopting the revenue rate, no matter what you say. They are not. I'll show it to you on their website. I'll prove it to you. But that's what bothers me the most is that we are so hateful to one another. That's not the town I moved into. It's not the town I want to live in. I don't know why anyone would want to come here and live. It's one thing that I am going to, I'll be honest, I didn't pay that close attention to what was going on in this building before I got on council. But I can guarantee you, when there comes a time that I leave this town, that I will pay attention to the next town to see what they're doing. And I think it's something that everybody should be doing and I will continue even when this budget is over on Thursday night. I told everybody at work this morning, I'll be glad when it's Friday because this should all be over. But I will continue to be at council meetings and I will continue to support our town in any way I can. But that's what I want. I want the fighting to stop and we should all be able to agree on a small increase that benefits a need for this town and we need our officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
Thank you, Billy.
Other comments on the public hearing?
Joel Glover, one seventy Double Oak Drive. We have a tremendous amount of money in surplus. We don't have a need. What we do need is some creative thinking. I think there are also been some rumors going around that there were certain people who did not support our police. That is very, very far from the truth. We very much support our police officers and I think everybody agrees that our patrol officers need a salary adjustment. That does not mean, however, that it has to come at the expense of the citizens. The point is not forty-nine dollars or a hundred dollars a year for for some particular amount. It's how well you spend the money that you have. So we are asking the council to look at all of the money that the town of Double Oak has and to spend it well and creatively and fiscally responsible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other, other public?
Pat Wellen, one forty Forest Park Drive. The other thing that I wanted to address was, Scott has even put, one time you said, we have this one point three million dollars. We need to give some of it back to the citizens. Well, why do that? Why raise taxes and instead use that money? Because that will give it back to us and put that money back into our pockets and still give the police raises because nobody has said we don't want to give police raises. We just think that all of this can be funded through the money that we already have or that will be rolled over again at the end of this fiscal year. So that was a statement you made several meetings ago. And so I feel like that's one of the ways that you can give that money back. Thank you.
I'll address that, but is it time? So that that's slightly out of context. I did say that. What I was saying though was, so out of the general budget, and I do agree, I'll be the first to agree, there's a lot of money in the general budget that, and it shouldn't be there. And I've explained multiple times how how it got there. But what I was saying was, you, you can't budget salaries and things like that out of the general budget. Because that's, that's a finite resource. So you have to budget things that are not a one-off shot within the means, within your means and your salary and your income means. So it's not possible to do that. Now, when I made the comment about getting the money back, I was saying it's very dangerous. And this is why it's out of context of what you're, what, of where you put it, Pat. What I was saying is very dangerous to to lower the tax rate an extreme amount because you can't recover that if the other means of revenue go away. So what I was saying is, instead of rolling that excess in, I'd be happy to give that back to the people. Keep the tax rate what it is and give the people the money back that we didn't use. I'd be very happy with doing something like that. And that's why, you know, the the difference between the general budget versus the the income we have versus the inability for us to like predict what we're going to get with sales tax. And that's another big deal, right? What happens with inflation goes up to eight point five percent and people are tired of shopping at at Best Buy and those like, because it's too expensive. They're going to buy at Amazon. And if you had bought that vacuum cleaner at Best Buy, Flower Mountain gets the taxing money, sales tax. You buy it online at Amazon, we get the sales tax. And I can't predict that. And that's where a lot of that money kind of came in. And that's why I said, let's not do something drastic. Because if we lower that tax rate a lot, I mean, a couple tenths of a percent or something like that. But if we lower it a lot, you're going to set up another town council for extreme failure. And what I said was, you think you got some mad people in the audience here, they're going to be down the street, around the corner and probably fill in the gym and the middle school over there because we won't be able to recover the funds. And I don't know why you're shaking your head, but that's true.
Thank you. Other public comment? Yes, please step up. Your name and address, please.
Cynthia Ray, one seven zero Whistling Duck Lane, here in Double Oak. And I certainly understand the income and expense in the budget process. But I do have one question and certainly nothing that I expect to be answered right now. But I would like for the council to look into switching to a fund accounting. So typically nonprofits, governments and churches use fund accounting. And I think a lot of that might resolve some of the issues that we run in today, into today. Because certainly for governments, when you use fund accounting, it does exactly, I think, the, what what people are wanting to see happen, which is to keep a tight grip on expenses that does prevent overspending. Basically, you've got a fund set up and there's input from who, like, there's a police fund. And I I know it might seem like it's the same thing, but in fund accounting, certainly for churches, you know, they're not in the business to, you know, make an income, right? They want to take care of their congregation. And the same thing, I think that's what I'm hearing here, is that all of the Double Oak residents, we all want to take care of each other. Well, from an accounting perspective, then I think fund accounting might be something you want to look into. Thank you.
So you're wanting us to do, I mean, we, that's what we're doing on the balance sheet. I'm just trying to understand your point. I mean.
My, my impression is that, you know, you're you're talking about, like, the money that, I guess, overabundance sitting in, in an asset account, right?
But no, they're in funds.
Okay, but but the presentation that I see from the budget basically is an income and expense, right?
So there's a balance sheet page that's attached to that that is based off of fund accounting of where we signed it. So that's one thing too, on the excess amounts. Some of them, like last year, we didn't get the roads repaired in time to fit within that budget cycle.
Right.
So that automatically, we, we voted and we moved that to.
And you transferred funds from one fund to another.
Yes, yes.
And and I guess that's kind of the point I'm trying to make is if you have an an excess in a fund, right? Then you talk about what makes sense from the rate. And then on top of that, you say, because we have this money in the fund that can take care of whatever that unexpected situation is by a simple agreement, right? You look at it, you look at the numbers, you do the transfer from a fund. It's, it is an accounting, you know, there's almost like a double entry.
Yeah.
But I think that would, that type of of display and presentation would make a lot more sense. But again, it's just a, just a question, just curiosity.
We are, yeah.
Yeah. And I would like to see it presented from, if if you are doing fund accounting, I think rather than showing a balance sheet and income statement, which kind of gives people a little bit different impression. You know, certainly until I came and started looking, I had no idea whether you guys were doing fund accounting or not because I was kind of hearing interchangeable, well, we've got this money in that fund. And then, of course, I've only been hearing, you know, all of the comments through the budget process and I see a profit and loss statement.
It's a hybrid. So we have a hybrid model.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so I, anyway, that's just. Okay, okay. Yeah, so anyway, that's just my comment, is that, you know, maybe going to a full fund accounting situation could relieve a lot of the angst, and help people understand where it comes from, and when a need arises, how it can be addressed from a fund accounting perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comments for the public hearing? All right, it is now 8:45. The public hearing is now closed. Item number 13, Discussion on the 2022-2023 Fiscal Year Budget and Tax Rate. Presentation by Treasurer Billy Garrett. We're going to continue to work on the budget. I also have a brief presentation that I would like to present to the council and to the citizens. Do we have the screen that we can put down? Okay, we're going to see if this is actually...oh, my goodness, this is actually going to work. Is it working? Is it working? All right. And this will be brief, for those of you who know me. I just wanted to take, just take a few minutes, because we're getting really, really close. I want to commend Billy on the work that she's done. Three weeks ago, we had around 108,000 that we were working on. We're down to about 50. I'm a firm believer that we can still get there. All right? So, real quick, I'm not going to read off all the slides, but doing some research, typical fund balances that folks should be carrying, the Government for Finance Officers Association recommends 16.5% to 16.8% of two months. All of that, I'll let you read it. I did call around and talk to a few governments. They're anywhere from 25% to 32%. We had a resolution passed where we want to keep 50% to 75%. We have a significant amount of funds in these balances, and when typically you would call on these is when there might be a time of need, or something that needs to be identified. And it's my understanding that we're going to have a decent chunk of those additional funds that will be added this year. So basically, here's what I'm talking about. What are the Double Oak citizens asking for? I'm hearing tax rate at no new revenue rate. I'm hearing fully funded Double Oak police force. I'm hearing 24-hour police coverage for Double Oak. I think that's been most of the noise in the town. I'm sure there's some other stuff. No particular order, I just put these up on the slide. All right, on 9/6, we were at 108 at the 21385 rate. On 9/18, with the work that Billy did, she got it down to 206239. As she stated earlier, it's $46 per household for Double Oak homeowners. In the budget, in the budget, is the full ask of Chief Rivas for the Double Oak Police Department. Why is that important? Because we've kicked the can down the road now for three, four, two, I don't know how many ever years, to where we were not in a position to make our Double Oak Police Department be competitive. The chief worked with Councilperson Parsons to work on this budget. They came to the table with an ask at 513. And of course, the other one is the 24-hour police coverage for Double Oak. That unfortunately is not a council position. That is done by our chief of police and staffing for the town. So how do we get there? Cut to the chase. All right, how do we make this happen? We can utilize some of the fund balance to ensure the no new revenue rate can be met, and give the Double Oak Police Department 100% of their budget that they had requested. When we started to look at this, we referenced a week or two ago about, maybe we would pay the Kohler's contract out of the fund, since it's going to potentially go away at some point in time in the year. That got me thinking. Well, we have other services-type contracts that we could potentially do this with. Now, in relation to what Scott has been talking about over the past couple meetings, it's important that we don't draw anything down to zero, because it makes it more difficult for us to get back to that. So basically, what we'd be looking at is, we can adjust certain services contracts to 50%, so we'd have 50% of the item budgeted, we'd have 50% we'd pay out of the fund. We talk about the engineering services. We have a general services contract, or excuse me, an engineering services contract, that we could also take a percentage and pay out of the general fund. We're chasing $50,000 here, folks, $50,000. I think we've all discussed the scenario that's been happening with the treasury funds, in terms of the town staff, and increases and such. So, you know, obviously, there's been benefit that's done there, regardless of what type of benefit it is. We have some building repairs budgeted that we're going to need to take care of. The best use of these funds would be to pull some of those and use them. And there were two little areas on the revenue side of the books that I felt that we were looking at under budgeting, based upon five-year averages that were higher. And so I just did a real small adjustment to those. So how does this roll out? So I've taken our chart of accounts on the left side. The budgeted amount we had is in the middle, 50% of that. You can all come down and do the math. And it basically, with that expense reduction, we could find that $50,000. If we do the increase on the revenue side of the balance sheet with those, just those two alone, we just got to the no new revenue rate. I understand everybody's facing inflation, and we're sitting here thinking that the town is not avoiding inflation. It is avoiding inflation. But when we started to work on this budget, we were putting things in there about inflation. We were increasing it. We were adding to the budget items. All right? We have a significant balance that we can utilize to combat this inflation for its citizens. And I get it, $46, I really think that the town will survive without it, but maybe somebody can't afford $46 to our citizens. So I believe in what Billy has said. We have been petty in many of this, and it's time to move on. My ask of the town council is to see if we can work through and find $50,000 tonight to get to the no new revenue rate, so it can be approved at Thursday's meeting. So I'll open it up for...
So, I 100% agree. I think we can find it. Maybe not in those lines, because some of the, yeah, I don't, but I think, the perfect one, I think, is the roads. We could carve 50 out of the roads, move 50 from the general budget into there, and we're done in a one light item, right? I also think, and to your point, because you made the point, too, but I was thinking about this earlier today, we were conservative on sales tax the past couple of years. Last year, we were not.
Right.
Last year, you see, we put a significant increase in sales tax, and I still think we undercut it. I think we could even increase revenue 50K, because I think more than 50K is going to go in the general fund, because we end up not spending a lot of money sometimes. And I think we'll be okay in those areas. So I have no doubt in my mind, we can get to the no new revenue and support the things that our town needs to support.
Like I said, mine were just suggestions. This is for us to discuss and see where we can find the best ways. I like yours maybe even a little better.
Yeah, because I hesitate on a few things. I mean, going back to your schedule of your services, I hear your sounds out there. I get it. Please keep in mind, we need to keep order. So, I just, then what do you do next year? That is my hard part.
That's why I said, that's why I said the roads.
That's why you're talking the revenue, right.
The roads.
Well, no, no, no. The roads, too. And last year, whenever we were trying to negotiate at the end of the budget season, too, somebody said roads, and the whole room erupted. Not the roads, you know, I mean, so...
No, but we're going to replace it with the balance fund, and hold on, I mean, we don't spend the money. That's the problem.
We, and absolutely true. We need to get that done, and we need to, but we do have issues on, I mean, we can't get concrete. We're trying to get it done, right? I mean, so the projects are behind. But my point was, and what I was trying to make is, when we know services are a certain price, cutting from those, that means next year, you've got to raise your rate in order to cover your services, if you no longer have it in your general fund. And I would also like to say, hold for a moment, please. I would also like to say, it was brought up during the meeting, now I lost my train of thought because of the peanut gallery. I got lost. It'll come back to me.
Well, I agree with you. That's why, so, Patrick, I think we can get it, but just not those, I don't want to cut services in half, because next year, you're going to have to put it back at 5,500, and it's going to mess up the next town council next year.
Yes.
So, that's, but, and again, if, and I go back to the roads, and I know people don't like the roads, we, if, I could already tell you what's going to happen in my little crystal ball right here. If we move the money out of roads, put it into the general fund, we don't, we still spend the same amount of money on roads, but we're not going to. And then the 50,000 more that we're going to make, is going to go back into the balance fund and replace that 50,000 we used for roads, and it's going to be available next year for roads again. So it's going to be cyclical until we understand clearly what our sales tax revenue is in this town. Yes, Billy?
True.
And I think you should probably put it up there, so we can see the numbers we're arguing about.
I did have my, my thought came back to me. So it was, you know, people saying, oh my gosh, there's so much sitting on the balance sheet. And we do. But we've also, in all of these meetings, have been talking about ways to use that. And that is how we have cut the budget down to where it is presented right now, is certain things where we say, hey, that's a one-off. And some of the things Patrick mentioned tonight, we talked about all those at the last budget meeting, of moving Steve Kohler's costs to the balance sheet, because we're not expecting to have that long-term. That's $34,000 right now on the budget. Move it over to the balance sheet, because we don't think it's going to be a long-term hit, a recurring, every-year hit anymore. We talked about the repairs that need to be made, to, or changing up the supply room, server room, that sort of thing that he mentioned. We've all talked about those and want to move them. And so we're all in agreement there, but we also kind of settled at that meeting last time, let's not move any of that, because people wanted to look at the police numbers. And so those are things that we need to move, absolutely, and the council had already discussed those.
If that adds up to the 50K, then we can leave the rest alone. I mean, yeah, where it comes from. As long as it's not services, salaries, and things like that that are recurring, you're not going to get an argument from me.
And so, I know Billy's done a lot of work between meetings, again, to work on those numbers, so maybe we should...
Should we let you speak, Billy, because you've got the answer, and we're sitting here arguing?
Oh, you know, I'll just let you, let you talk, but you kind of stole a little bit of my thunder, Scott. Darn you.
I'm good at that.
So I did do some work. I got it, you know, we were out, $98,000 at the end of, you know, two weeks ago, and we were here till all of us should have been sleeping. I did some other work, one thing we talked about after the meeting, since Kohler's contract, or the building inspector, just say Kohler, but I will say, I should have came up and said it, but, you know, Kohler's been a good partner for this town for a really long time. So I think it's something, you know, because we didn't ask if they do take Randall on other, you know, how much is that fee? I mean, to just let Randall go with them. So I think that's something council needs to make sure that you talk about.
We have to find that out, yes.
But Kohler has been a good partner. So even if we took $48,000 out there, that, cut that in half, down to 50. Started looking at some other things, things I want to make sure that we all understand, that still we have, the police department is in this budget at full for the patrol officers and the inspector at the 513,000. Last time where we had settled is, there is a 0% pay increase for the chief, the assistant chief, and town secretary. She had taken hers out to get Brian and Lynn, you know, what she wanted for them. So that's just one thing I want to mention. But I will say, and I updated, we had talked about some differences in the general liability insurances, council, you know about, but we've, you know, I've updated those, and we have zero for council contingency. I'm okay with that this year, because, like we've said, we've been taking some one-time expenses, and Patrick, I appreciate what you did, but I don't, I'm with Scott. I fully believe if you have something that we pay year after year, you cannot start paying it from the balance sheet, because eventually your balance sheet runs out, your savings account is empty, and then, like Scott said, the room, this room is going to be, we're going to be in the middle school.
Well, I mean, that's not necessarily true. I mean, I run a business. We can still find the funds to put it back the next year.
Right. But you have to raise the tax rate to do it. So, and that's what nobody wants to do. And unfortunately, I'm sorry, but we cannot, no new revenue rate forever. I hear what you're saying. Jill, let us have our time, and you be quiet. I'm tired.
Excuse me. Whoa, 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 stop. Hold on, hold on, hold on. We don't, we don't talk to the...
And how many times have you guys done that to us?
Billy.
So just stop.
Please.
I'm sorry. Just stop. Okay? Let us have our time, and please, just listen to me. I've done a lot of work, and I've actually found the $50,000 without having to cut any more expenses. And you will get your no new revenue rate, so you'll be happy. Everybody will win. I did some calculations on...
I do want to add one little thing, though. I think this year, the no new revenue rate is very important, because this is when it freezes for some of the people.
I understand. I get it.
Okay, so I think, I think that's why it's very important to some people.
It is. So I took a better look at our sales tax. Steal my thunder, Scott.
I had played with it.
So currently, as of last Friday, our sales tax was 576,000. And we, over the last three months, have been averaging 52, almost $53,000 in sales tax revenue. So if you add that to the 576, you get 629,000 for the year. We, that is an increase of about $50,000 over last year. So I think we could probably easily take the sales tax revenue to 650, and we will probably come in above that even on actuals, because if Brahms happens to get open, and Sherwin-Williams is going to be in business for a full year, I think we can get there.
I was going to actually, you've heard me harp on sales tax, and I was going to recommend that, but I didn't want to steal your thunder, so...
You did.
And I didn't want to take a liberty with mine, so...
So, I'm going to drop the 650 in there, and I think everybody wins. I think that's the way that comes out. I'm going to drop the no new revenue rate here instead. Sorry. Got too big.
And the whole point of this discussion, my presentation, Scott's impact, input, this was about getting creative enough to be able to do this. We're too, we're too close. If we were sitting on a couple hundred thousand dollars, folks, we'd be staring you in the eye, saying, this is the best we can do.
What am I doing wrong here?
Sorry, Billy, what?
What am I doing wrong here?
What's your, are you pulling it in with a formula, or what do you?
Yeah, I changed that to the R. Oh, wait, I think this one has to change.
Yeah, you got it, that one.
You've got it plugged on the no new revenue, yeah.
There we go.
You've got to change the...
There we go. I think.
And then the same line for...
We're out of balance by $959, using the no new revenue rate. I'm sure we can find it somewhere.
And at the, the sales tax rates, I mean, not the rates, but the sales tax that you're talking about, so, yeah, the 52,000 gets us to 624, which I get, you're saying we're averaging 52 to 53 the last couple months, so that would get us. And we've received all of it, or we receive one more, one more payment, right?
Yeah, we get one more month. Right now, we're at 576, so one more month, averaging a little less than 53, gets us to 629.
Yep.
Almost 629 and a half. So that's, so last year, we ended at 577 and a half, so...
And that doesn't include what we think we might get from Sherwin-Williams, because they're too new, and potentially Brahms, if they ever get out of the, we haven't gotten our kitchen equipment cycle.
That's 52,000 more than what we collected last year, without Sherwin-Williams for a full year. You're going to have Sherwin-Williams for a full year. Hopefully Brahms will be open within the year.
Correct.
Who knows? We got one more space open over there that could... Who knows, we got one more space open over there that could bring something else.
Yep.
Um, I think that gets us, and we find a thousand dollars somewhere.
So do we at all consider the three that have no raises right now? Because if we're averaging fifty-two to fifty-three thousand a month on sales tax revenue, do we consider that there might be a little bit more cushion there to go up? Because that doesn't include Christmas, which we talked about, like for three months, we get substantially higher revenues those three months. Um, so do we consider that there might be a little cushion to go up a little bit more, um, for raises for the three that currently don't have them? Just want to throw that out to council to consider.
I would say based upon the way it, it is appearing that the treasury funds are going to play out, um, not this year. So we'll, Billy, you'll, you'll make the adjustment for the nine-fifty-nine somewhere in there.
I would just put it in the sales tax.
Yeah.
As well, right?
It's a thousand bucks of sales tax at that, at that point, yeah. What were you going to say, Scott?
Uh, uh, do we know what the, putting the two percent back in did? Well, how, how much did that decrease it, Billy?
The formulas for those three, the formulas should still be there.
Yeah, they are. So, hold on, I'm doing a little bit of calcing here. Um. So what did we budget last year? Trying to play with the sales tax number a little bit more. Five-fifteen, one minute. Sorry. What am I doing? Lord, I can't add in this. Minus five-fifteen. Yeah, I think six-fifty's probably. We could get there, more than that, but yeah, we can drop the nine-fifty-nine in there, or you want to see what it does?
Put it at six-fifty-one, put the sales tax at six-fifty-one first.
To what?
Six-fifty-one.
Six-fifty-one?
Mm-hmm.
You want, I mean, you got to be exact.
Yeah, six-fifty, nine-fifty-nine.
I just want a six-fifty-one for right now.
All right.
There you go, all right. And now I want to see what happens.
Forty over.
Forty dollars and eighty-three.
No, 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 no.
Oh, now you want to put those in there? Okay, I'm with you. Sorry.
So, wait, 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 you passed one.
Oh, wait, I did. Yep. What do you want?
What he said two.
Two? Two on both of these?
Let's see where we are. But that's what it.
Yeah, six-sixty's what, I mean, six-sixty-seven. You could be amiss, you could not.
Again, I'm.
Where'd you put that extra revenue?
Uh, the, oh.
Well, yeah, so the, the miscellaneous construction, but I think we.
Yeah, where's the, the, it's twenty-three, we have twenty thousand up against twenty-three of a five-year average. And we had seven, twelve feet seventy-five up against thirty-nine.
Oh, we.
Mine, uh, thirty and thirty-one.
We already have it at twenty though, right?
Yeah, it's at twenty.
Okay.
Okay.
And we increased roofs a little bit.
Shoot, I thought we were at twelve.
No, this is a, so you're at twenty-four, seven, current. This is difference to.
Put it at, put it at twenty-three, I agree with Patrick on that one.
Twenty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Thirty-one hundred dollars.
Not that we go out of hailstorm or anything. Well, eh, eh, not to be trite, but we're, we're pretty much built out, which is fact, but we're doing a lot of home renovations and roofs. Either they get held on or they, the Texas heat just beats them to death. And whether we like it or not, they end up getting replaced.
Yeah, and Randall's been doing a lot of work of driving around town and seeing where people are not pulling permits for their work. And so he's getting those, so.
Things that, that I think were missed the last couple of years, so.
Should see an increase of, of ones where they weren't permitted before that are going to be permitted going forward.
It was lost revenue.
Yep.
I mean, just was.
And I can't remember, is it eighty-five dollars a roof? I think that was how we came to that number because we multiplied it by the eighty-five, which would. That's forty-seven roofs at the, the amount that we're at this year, um, the third.
So.
Okay, and there's one that I.
Did we not want to change, we decided we're not changing that one or where are we going?
Oh, sorry, which one?
The roofs we were talking about, are we?
Oh, we did, we bumped it.
Where does?
I think it was still at twelve-seventy-five.
Oh, I'm sorry, we bumped the.
How much is, where does Kohler's fuel go? Does he charge us?
He doesn't, he just gets his flat fee.
Kohler doesn't charge us fuel?
Uh-uh.
Yeah, no. We took that out.
Um, there's one I always whine about and I never get my way. And I think if I get my way this year, we're going to be okay. Go back up to the court area.
To the court?
To where?
The court area. Which is the one I'm always whining about.
The, the court area, this one?
Yes, this is the one.
Okay.
I'd say one-twenty.
So.
The five-year actuals is one-forty-one, we're at one-oh-nine, but I, so I think it's a safe bet.
We are at one-oh-nine now?
Yes.
Oh, that went up quite a bit.
Yeah.
As of Friday.
So.
Okay, that was, that was.
I'm going to, I whine, uh, this is my sixth year doing that, I've whined for six years now.
And I will support you by raising the salaries and hiring. I know chief, it's going to take some time to hire, but you're going to have, you should have.
You should have patrol officers available.
Patrol officers available going forward.
So.
So you want to raise it five thousand to one-twenty?
Yep.
We have a.
We have a comment back there. Step up, please.
Name an address, please.
Kenan Mo, Kenan Moffett, one-forty Shady Oaks Lane. Point of clarification, somewhere in this process, and I don't know who said that we got a windfall of around six-hundred thousand dollars in sales tax because everybody was staying home and ordering on Amazon, somewhere along.
That was Scott.
That was the line item that we just increased.
Right.
Right, okay.
Okay. But have people gone back to, oh, I need it now, go to the store and get it, well, because the store's open? Perhaps a little bit of public education about, hey, keep your tax dollars at home by doing X, Y, Z. We can increase, I mean, hey.
That's a great idea.
It's a great idea.
Well, and, and that's anybody besides Amazon.
Well, I, I, I know, but I mean, that's, that's free money. I mean, hey, they can deliver dog food to my house all day long. So, you know, why should I go pick up the paper at the store? Let them bring it to me. But with a little bit of education, I think that we might be able to get a little more there.
Yeah, I, I agree. We'll call it, we'll call it by Double Oak, how about that?
Thank you, that's a great idea to.
Well, no, I used to give my husband a lot of grief for buying stuff at Amazon and I've totally changed my mind.
Well, and actually, I talked to a friend the other day who typically has it delivered to work in Flower Mound because she didn't realize. Um, and so she is shifting to ordering it to Double Oak because of that education as well. So I agree, that's a great point. We could maybe do a, I'm not a graphic design person, but maybe we could do a graphic design thing that we post on Facebook to, to educate.
Yes, sir.
My blue bucket down here.
Yay.
Excellent.
Jill Glover, one-seventy Double Oaks Drive. So I want to make a clarification because I got a little bit lost and I apologize. So those employees who legitimately, not, not the three that, that we're talking about, but the other ones. Did they, did we put raises for them back in?
Yes.
I, I do not mean to come across as the bad guy, but my job is to advocate for our citizens. And I just want to suggest that it is a real slap in the face to these citizens who no one, I would venture in this room, got a twenty-five thousand dollar bonus from their job this past year in addition to a raise, in addition to a nine percent raise last year. So I would ask that you please reconsider those raises. Um, because we really feel like with that twenty-five thousand dollars, which had the full council considered, and I don't believe that those bonuses would have been that high, we would have said, you know what? We need that money for drainage. Um, the current council did not all get opportunity to discuss that money because those checks were written after the last election and before our, the three new council members were sworn in. So I think it is very unfair to the citizens to continue to award money when so much has already been given. And especially if we're looking at places where that money is needed in other areas. So I would ask that you please reconsider that on behalf of the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, are you, you're talking about the, the other six?
Yes, all of them.
Okay, all of them, you don't want to raise for anyone?
No, no.
No.
That's, that's what I'm trying to clarify. You.
The officers are covered in, in Chief Rebus's budget. So you're, you're covered.
I'm talking about the police.
Right.
Could you please clarify again who you're talking about then?
I'm talking about those other town employees who, who got the double dollars.
Okay, yeah.
That's everybody but Randall.
Correct.
Okay, just to clarify.
Up, up.
Thank you.
You.
Scared him off. Come back, Bob.
Bob, come on.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'll speak to that, I'm not, I'm not, I don't plan to take those raises out. I'm le, I plan, I mean, I would like to see them stay the way that they are. I know it's a council decision, but I, that was, I know it keeps being called a bonus. It was considered, it was called premium pay for tasks that occurred by essential workers during COVID. And so I don't view that as a bonus where they should not be eligible for some sort of, um, pay adjustment. And, and I truly, on those that we're talking about, I'm viewing that as a cost of living adjustment right now. And in the meeting last week, we talked extensively about, um, the court clerk salary, which is Brian. And he really is, does so much more than what a court clerk is considered doing, which is what that salary came from. Um, he really handles all of our technology and, and we've talked about trying, um, or not trying to, but the plan is, there are plans in motion to adjust his job description, rewrite his job description. And that budget incorporates what we expect that role to cover between his salary and the piece. And over time, that would maybe, we'd have to do like a budget adjustment or something, seeing how all that plays out. But that is the plan of the council and the town administration as we've discussed these items in the prior meetings. So I just want to state that again from the prior meetings for anyone who didn't hear those. But we feel like those are really important items. Um, and that goes to employee retention as well, to, um, change that job description for what he's actually doing. Um, but that's just the one, but that's my piece on that.
But I, I think if, if you looked at the way Treasurer Garrett had it set up, the increase was there for Randall, the increase was there for Brian, the increase was there for Lynn. It wasn't for the other three. And now we're, and we can call it whatever we want to call it. I can't even use the word stipend, but it's probably not the right word either. Um, they got something and it was significant by an error in judgment, but they still got something. And now as we try and balance this budget to the no new revenue rate. And it's taken a lot for us to get here and we're close, and now we're taking it the other way. With the fact that it's still an unknown situation with what has to get done with those funds, the funds that are probably going to get to be kept. My position is that we would not put them back in for, um, an increase next year. So we have a balanced budget or are we going to adjust it back out?
We have what they've been asking for, which is a no new revenue budget. So at some point in time, you got to call it a day. We got there and I say, let's, let's put this one in the can and call it, call it a night. Or move on to the next-gen item. I mean, we can, we can sit here and mess with this, you know, endlessly. And at some point in time, we need to move on.
Yeah. Well, it is my understanding that, that we could address that one issue on Thursday.
We still could on Thursday if.
And, and.
We felt the need.
But we can get the rest of the agenda out of the way today.
Yes.
Remember, I'm only one vote.
Nope, I got that.
One voice, one vote. And I respect everybody else's voice and their.
I guess I would, I would like, I would like some time to think about this. And if we can still have time to change it on Thursday, fine, but give me a couple nights of sleep on it.
We, we can.
So it's not all bad.
Make any, any more adjustments we want to make on Thursday. The only thing we cannot do is go above the rate we set a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. So, and that's what happened last year. We made major changes in that last meeting. So can I ask Mr. Berman a question to make, or would you prefer I ask later?
I don't know, what's the question?
About the super, super majority vote on budget, correct?
Um, no, if the tax rate exceeds, if the tax rate exceeds the no new revenue rate, the vote on the tax rate must receive at least sixty percent with the budget and the ratification votes are simple majority.
Simple majority, okay. Thank you. I was more concerned especially, yeah.
Okay. Good over there, Billy? All right, thank you for your hard work. Very much appreciated.
Yes, thank you, Billy.
Um, we have, we, we do have citizen comments still to follow as it relates to items fourteen and items fifteen. Uh, William Wood.
Hey, I was just going to.
Need your name, full name and address.
I got two addresses, one-forty Lake Trail Drive and, uh, eighty-three fifty-one Justin Road. Pick which one you want.
I'll take the one-forty.
All right, that'll work. Uh, I'm glad y'all are doing this, that looks like Klingon to me. Uh. Like, this is way above my pay grade, but, uh, uh, I've been in my line of work. If it don't crap, I can't fix it. So, anyway, I really came to support and reiterate my support of the Double O P D. Uh, I have been a, uh, as some of you know, most of you don't, I have been a crime victim, big-time crime victim on more than one occasion. Uh, and at that time Lieutenant Rebus, now Chief Rebus, uh, was there. Uh, uh, he helped eventually apprehend, uh, the perp. And Brian was on the P D at the time and, uh. He helped eventually apprehend the perp, and Brian was on the P D at the time, and Brian came by, because my wife was terrified after our house was burglarized. He came by every day for about sixty days when I was working. So retention of wonderful, hard-working, public servants like this is essential, okay? And then we've had, you know, horrible critical losses to our P D family, and, and we've got to try to replace these people. And people aren't going into police academy right now. Look at all the, all the DA stuff that Soros has done, and all this other stuff. We have officers retiring early, we have other ones quitting, we have a shortage. And, and it's not just the police department, uh, I'm having to pay right now for doctors twenty percent higher than I was two years ago, because we have such a shortage in, in the field of veterinary medicine. Same with our, we call them technicians, but they're nurses, we have the same thing. So we have to keep what we've got, which are great, but we, we gotta get more. So that's one of the first things, but the other thing is, yeah, twenty-four hours. Third o'clock in the morning, y'all, it's either cops or crooks, nobody else is out, okay? We need, we need to have twenty-four hour. I can remember way back when I was a teenager, my family assisted in putting away the perp of one of the biggest murders in the history of the United States, and we had police protection going past, I slept on the Florida room, going past my fold-out bed, uh, night after night, just creeping by, and it would, you slept good like that. And, you know, the safety of citizens is the primary responsibility of government, whether it's in the Double Oak Town Council or the Congress. The safety of our citizens comes first. So, uh, we're gonna have to aggressively fund, uh, our P D in order to get new folks and keep who we got who are great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Garrett.
Uh, Gary Garrett, one-twenty Trailing Oaks Drive, and I, like Dr. Wood, have been a crime victim in Double Oak. And I can tell you from experiences, the doctor will tell you, that once you've been a crime victim and your personal space has been invaded, uh, it's personal, and you really have a great deal of respect for the police officers, and will do whatever you can to support them. And I, I congratulate the council, I congratulate the residents for coming together and realizing that, number one, we have to fund the police department. Uh, Chief Revis, you're to be acknowledged and thanked for sticking to your budget line item, that you, the dollars that you requested to substantially support our P D department for the next fiscal year. Things are changing dramatically, it's already been emphasized as far as the shortage of police officers, and, uh, it's, it's just, uh, it's a critical time in, uh, in our, in our society. Uh, wanted to point out one thing, forty-two years ago, we had a town marshal, okay? Uh, I had to call him about three o'clock in the morning because of a disturbance. I didn't realize he was a volunteer. His job, his full-time job, he was a Frontier Airlines pilot. And so, uh, it was an interesting experience. We take a lot of things for granted when it comes to safety and security. I don't know how many people, when they move into a neighborhood, they go to the police department and check it out before they buy their home, I suspect not very many. We take things like that for granted. So thank you, Chief, for what you do, and, uh, thank you, council, thank you, citizens, for coming together. There's too much angst going on right now because of the differences of opinion. I think we're getting there for the common good of the community, and I'd just like to comment regarding the signs that were up in Double Oak. The signs served a positive purpose, if you look at the big picture. They got people here, okay? I doubt if a lot of people would have showed up had not those signs been out there. And it gave people pause to think about what was actually going on relative to the police. And so, uh, that being said, we got to where we needed to be, so thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Nan Bowen. Not here? Jill Glover. So we move on to item number fourteen, discussion, consideration, and action on salary ranges within the Double Oak Police Department. Can you be brief with your presentation? Because I think you got what you wanted.
Right.
No, seriously, I don't, I'm just kidding.
No, no, no.
You take as much time as you need.
Yes, sir. Uh, I do appreciate the council taking the time and, uh, the last two weeks looking at, uh, the police department budget and salaries proposed. Um, like I, like I said last week, um, everybody, every other town is raising their salaries just to be able to recruit officers. I contacted four of the chiefs today, and they're raising for next year, too. They realize that it takes, um, an increase in salaries to be able to recruit. It was just funny, I just saw Garland, uh, Garland or Plano just recently pushed theirs out, top pay a hundred and two thousand with sign-on bonuses. So, um, I think what I proposed, uh, gets us in the average middle of the salaries from other agencies, and it gives us a better opportunity to get people out, officers out here and want to work with us. Uh, so it makes us compatible with everybody else. So I believe what I put forward is, is good, um, I guess it's just time to say yes or no.
Thank you, Chief, and, uh, obviously, I think it's important that the, the council, uh, and the citizens assist you in, in bringing on the officers as well. You don't have to feel like you have to burden us all alone. Um, we are here to help, we are here to do whatever you need us to do, and I'm sure that if we wanted to get some citizen committee or something together, like some other towns have done, so that it's not all on your shoulders as the burden.
Yes, sir.
So.
I have a couple thoughts, um, doing my homework, pulled up the Bartonville proposed budget for the coming year, and looked at the P D just for giggles, since we're hot in the middle of that conversation, and I just, just for public edification, they are increasing their salaries and wages, departmental for salaries and wages, fourteen point nine percent for the coming year. That's sixty-two thousand dollars, sixty-two thousand twenty dollars they're adding to their budget. They're adding, um, retirement in the amount of thirty thousand three hundred and forty, which is a fifty-point-five percent increase for the coming year. Health and dental, they're adding five hundred and two, which is dollars, which is seven-point-eight-five percent, and, or, I'm sorry, payroll taxes, five hundred and two dollars, which is seven-point-eight-five percent. Health and dental, nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, so they're increasing their benefits, which is a fourteen-point-six percent increase. So while we've, we've struggled to get where we are, like Chief just said, you know, this is, sadly, I don't think we're at the end of the road, I think we're gonna, we're gonna see this going on, I don't know, hopefully not long, but it could. So at least if we're getting closer to where we need to be in the middle, hopefully we won't be looking at large increases on an annual basis, I'm hoping, I got my fingers crossed, yes.
Just so everybody on camera can see it too, please, thank you.
Jill Glover, one-seventy Double Oaks, and I'm not, I guess I'm not done. Do you have a question on your research for Bartonville? Do they pay, uh, benefits a hundred percent?
Um, I would have to look at that spreadsheet, I believe for employees, but not for spouses and children. Which is something that has been addressed by, uh, others in the audience, Pat Wellen, on multiple times, to the town and to me specifically, and I agree that it's something we need to look at. However, that's a next-year discussion, because we had to make a decision, so next, when, when we get into the next budget year, I would like to see the council take a look at that early enough in the cycle to see what our options are for a town our size with the number of employees that we have.
Right, okay.
So yes, in, in comparison, but my point is, is we're just trying to catch up and keep up, so, and, and nobody's, nobody's staying the same, I guess is my whole point.
Is Bartonville fully staffed?
They are now, yes.
Yes, they are now, with the last officer that they hired that we had hoped to get and didn't.
Right, and they have six officers, I believe, a chief, a detective, and then four patrol officers? No, not a detective, a sergeant, chief, a sergeant, and four patrol officers, right?
I don't think they have a sergeant right now, uh, they haven't appointed a sergeant right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
The, the, one thing I was gonna, just want to, uh, make sure we did not fail to mention was, um, um, there was a petition that went around that's on our, our desk, and also that, I think it's in the, the packet. It was a petition that says we, that says residents of Double Oak, um, must be safe and secure twenty-four seven. Town council must fully fund the, the Double Oak Police Department as requested by Chief Revis on September sixth, twenty-twenty-two, in the amount of five hundred thirteen thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-six cents. This fully funds six patrol officers and a detective. The town's safety is essential service and must be funded if doing so exceeds the no new revenue tax rate. Fully funding the police department exceeds, if, uh, fully funding the police department exceeds the no new revenue estimate, probably, by approximately ninety-eight thousand dollars, which is less than one hundred dollars a household in Double Oak per year. And I just wanted to point out that the citizens signed this even knowing that it would raise, uh, potentially raise the tax rate, um, past the no new revenue rate. Now, I'm very happy to say that we were able to achieve both, so I wanna, I wanna definitely, again, thank Billy, some of the good ideas that came through to, to make sure that we got there. But there was, I counted, a fast count, because there's-
Hundred eighty-nine.
Hundred eighty-nine.
I counted.
Hundred eighty-nine people signed that, um, and, uh, like I said, there were some, I couldn't tell by how many emails and things like that there were, so, uh, it was a fast count. A hundred eighty-nine people were in favor of it, even if it raised the tax rate, so happy to say we can do it without raising the tax rate, so we can meet a lot of people's, uh, agenda items. And I think we can all go to bed early tonight and happy.
Earlier, we'll still work to get out of here earlier in the future.
Any further discussion, council?
Well, I think we need to, yeah.
Well, do we have a motion?
Go ahead.
No, I, I, I don't know if, I'm the one who, well-
Yeah, you did, I mean, you did the work with Chief Revis, so you should, you should, yes.
Should I, okay. So do I need to sh, show the schedule again, or how should we word that, Eileen? So we kind of have two, we, we have two items, and I guess we kind of have to consider them, uh, because one item is the salary ranges, and another is the base salary adjustment. I see Mr. Berman moving forward, do you have any tips on how to, um, because I just want to make sure we do it properly, I think we're all on the same page of what we want.
No, honestly, I think it's really for, for public purposes and for transparency, I mean, that we've allotted a certain sum of money to the chief through, the police department through our budget process, this year and next year, and it's really his call as to how we distribute some funds within that budget. So really, you're effectively just simply ratifying the chief's proposal regarding base salary and salary ranges within the department. So if you wanted to, you could.
We could really do it in seriatum, in other words, together, is what you're suggesting.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
There'll be a motion to ratify the salary range and base salary adjustments proposed by the chief.
Okay.
That's where I was hoping to go.
I think so. So then I move that we ratify the salary ranges and the base salary adjustments proposed by Chief Revis for the Double Oak Police Department, um, and the numbers were presented in the prior meeting of the... Do I state the number?
No, you don't have to.
Okay, because that'll, yeah.
You can if you want, if you don't have to.
Well, the number that was stated on our prior meeting was five thirteen, five seventeen, point five six.
Yeah.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second. I thought Gene wanted to-
No, I was, I was checking the numbers, so I apologize, you beat me to it, that's fine.
We got a second from Scott, right?
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to ask our town secretary, Eileen Kennedy, to please call a vote.
Mr. Whizenhun.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye. Agenda item number fourteen and fifteen pass. Moving on to agenda item sixteen, council staff announcements and comments. I have a Cynthia Ray that had put on for, so, are you good? Okay.
I have one quick one. Um, Double Oak Women's Club is meeting tomorrow evening here at seven P M. Come one, come all, if you're a member, it's time, and if you have a friend or somebody who isn't a member, it's a great opportunity to introduce them to the wonderful things that the Double Oak Women's Club does for the community.
Any other further business to discuss, council?
I just wanted to remind everybody that on Thursday, the twenty-second, is when we will vote on the budget and the tax rate.
Correct.
Same time, same place, seven o'clock.
Same time the agenda went out?
Yes.
We will vote to approve the budget, and I know there's some specific wording that we have to make sure we have, and make sure we get that done.
Very specific, yes. She will print it out for us.
Good.
Okay, yeah, seven o'clock.
Any further business, council?
No.
There's no further business, is there a motion from town council to adjourn?